It's the fourth meeting of the board that we invited, we asked Walter Pastor from Little St. Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor?
Amen. Thank you. Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, Lord God Almighty, we come to say thank you, Lord God, for this first day of the work week, Lord. We thank you for how you washed over it, how you kept it, and how you have brought us to this place, Lord God. Father, I thank you now for the thinking enough of me to come and ask that. We pray, Lord God, we pray and invite you to come into this meeting. So these men and these women, Lord God, who take care of the county, Lord God, will be able to come up and do those things which is right and pleasing in the eyesight. Lord, they need you right now. This county needs you, Father. And we thank you for the mighty work that you're doing. And Lord, we just want to make ourselves available for you as county employees, as county residents of Taylor County, Lord God, that you would use us in a mighty way. Help us now, Lord God, to be our, and be our brother's keeper all over this county, Lord God. Just give us the work we're called to, to be able to do those things that will make Taylor County the county you would have it to be. So bless this board of commissioners, county commissioners right now. Bless each and every person here tonight, Lord God. Lord, you know, whatever their reason for being here, Lord, it hadn't caught you by surprise. So we ask that you take charge now. And we thank you, Lord God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Bless the leadership to do the practice of the United States of America and to the record with all of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you Pastor Goldman for that prayer and the invitation to come back just to call this town time, doesn't mean that we don't. You can hear from the board if you want our attention or the government come at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone else to the meetings this evening. Um, I'd just like to announce that our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, August the twentieth at nine AM. With that, we'll go to item three, approval of the agenda. I know a one add-on which is eleven A to the ten ten agenda. Let the board consider approval, final payment request form, final accepted certificate and a company certificate for the meeting of two votes for the Environmental Services Department. Are there any other additions or changes to your business that anybody knows about? If not, is there a motion to approve your agenda?
I'm looking.
When we have a motion of confirmation of him to a second confirmation of living, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye. Motion carries. Bid public hearing number four, the warrant dispute bid for the sale of parcels of property acquired by the county from tax deed sales which acceded to the county through the tax deed process, set for this date at six PM or as soon thereafter as possible.
Now, question mark. Okay, we have received several bids. You have some bids on your desk that shows, one of them did put the name on it that we didn't disqualify because it had the parcel and the tax deed number on there. Uh, we give one to a small problem. One of the parcels that we had, uh, or two of them, so the building was on the lot. Well, some of these tax deeds go out several years because you notice the county, it's in the process like three years. So some of it hit the time when they, there was a building on it. But, you know, in time, something happened to the building. So the property trader has corrected that, but we had, uh, two people that we threw their bids after they found out the building was on the deck. So, uh, we had those done, but we did get some on there. You got that bid on your desk. Okay, on the first one is the bid is from Iowa Wood Salt and Saint Nicole. And he bid one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars on that lot. One thousand two hundred and ninety. And he's the only bidder on that parcel. And it was on an O six tax deed application.
And that's just a lot?
Uh, I could look at the legal description and tell you what it was, but, um, it was whatever was advertised in the paper. I'm seeing what they tell you. Okay, that O six twelve, the opening bid on the, at the tax deed sale was three thousand three hundred and seventeen thirty-six. And the value at sale was two thousand fifteen and the legal description is the west half of Lot Four, Lot B of NL Smith Subdivision. So it sold for twelve hundred and ninety dollars. The next one is on, uh, tax deed application twelve dash eleven. Still the old bid, bid on that one. And her bid is five hundred dollars. She's the only bidder on that, that one. What's her value in the company? Uh, let me see. That is twelve left. The bid at the tax deed sale was five thousand six twenty-three thirty-seven. The value at the sale was twenty-five thousand four fifty-three. And it's Lot fourteen, Lot one of Jerkin High.
This doesn't have a building on it?
I have to look back at the application. But see what happened is it happens sometimes. The building was there and it might burn or something. And then she gets the taxes the next year they're going to lay down. So that could be, that hers, like she did five hundred dollars on that. Okay?
Kind of hard to make a decision. Is that, you know, if you say it's five thousand plus, or twelve, huh? Two point five thousand four hundred, that's the value at the compensation. Somebody bids five hundred dollars. Whether I know-
And that's the two thousand twelve, that's taking it till it's seven years old.
Well, it's seven years old. So we don't know what's happening on that. Probably in seven years. We haven't gotten any taxes in seven years.
No, because it's been, it's been long.
So when they go on the tax roll, what if they go on the tax roll, five thousand point five?
Probably five, five hundred a year back what they bid for it. I don't know. They may go out and do a reassessment. I don't, like I say, I don't know what kind of these parcels are, you know. And some of them were taxes, they were buildings on there and then something happened to them. Fire or they were missing. A lot of them had double Y trailers on there and they, the trailer wasn't repossessed. So it brings the thing up. The next tax deed, you know. You'd have to go back and look at the history. Okay, on the next one, the tax deed application fourteen, dash zero zero eight. And you see we got two bidders on that. The first one is Centrex Properties LLC. The bid amount on that parcel is two hundred and fifty dollars. And it's, uh, two hundred oh eight. The other bid at the set tax deed deal was two thousand three hundred and ninety-four. The value of the lot, the value at the sale was five thousand. And it's Lot one, Lot thirty-nine, J C Calvin Subdivision. And the bid was two fifty. That's Centrex Properties LLC. Okay, the ne- the next one where you've got a blank, it's Miles K Benzinger. My L E S K Benzinger, B E N V T E R.
I know.
Okay, his bid is two hundred dollars. That was just like a wooded lot. I'm trying to look up the properties, um, as we go along. The only one so far I see building on is the O five three eight seven dash zero zero zero. Okay, that's the one on the twelve, that's eleven. He said, R O five three eight seven. That one's the bid of the five hundred dollars. Okay, the next one is fourteen, double oh nine. And Centrex has the only bid on that lot.
Is Centrex local?
Yes, it is. And on that one, the parcel number is three nine two eight, dash zero zero zero. The bid's a hundred dollars. That looks like another wooded lot.
Oh, man.
Okay, let's see on fourteen, double oh nine. The other bid at the tax deed sale was two thousand one ninety-six seventy-five. And the value of the property was sixty-five hundred. And it's the north half of Lot Seven of the W H U division. And the bid was a hundred dollars. And this, the last one, is tax deed application fourteen, dash zero two five. The parcel number is R O one seven six six five six two. And that's two bids. This parcel's up at Channing Grove somewhere. It's on the north side of Little St. Okay, the first bid is Mike Anderson. He did a thousand dollars. And the next bid is Chris Patrick and some sign off. And his bid across is four hundred dollars.
Now, that's property must be one of those, except the bid had the twelve, fifteen, that's a lot. The bid-
No, it's, uh, well, this is on the north side fourteen.
It's a ten acre.
It's a ten acre.
It's a ten acre.
Yeah, yeah, it's a ten acre.
Okay, so what do we go on here? What's the concept from here?
It's, you know, uh, it's the board's decision. He was setting the bids or, you know. But that leaves you, we had, we knew when we had these things, like was the first time we got a couple. And three of those, we had twelve left. And y'all declared, uh, five more at circle. Uh, and we added it to that. So, um, twelve, uh, seventeen parcels we had in town for. And we got, uh, we had seventy-eight. So you still got all that sitting out there, you know, you know. And some of it, except the last five that you added, it's just a second time today. So I'll go through it in Mark one seven seven this time and see if we got the law to see, if we got to see them, if not, we'll be back with that one. And add it to the list now, which you want to reassess what you want to do. But I encourage everybody you call, uh, please go to the board. Because some of it did with them. You think you know that. And make sure that that's what you want to do. Uh, the bid, uh, someone, a friend called me back before, uh, about that. Okay?
Are any of these lots buildable? I'm thinking habitat for human in there or looking the time of time, buildable lots.
Well-
But, you know, I mean, I don't know if it's a problem.
The last five that you asked them to leave and that you declared for, for that time, all of them was the same tax deed application. So they didn't through the property. And they landed in a price, uh, value of ten thousand three thirty-five, six thousand, three six thousand, one five, and one five thousand sixteen. And one of them, you know, I told you it was in two minutes. And I asked the people that was in habitat, to go and look at it and see if it was still a lot. And we definitely discovered, the tax deed was just what y'all got. And the lot's time was on, but I didn't know any, any bids. So the company, some of them are ship, uh, lots. And you have to advertise, have publicity and all that kind of stuff. We haven't done any of that yet. But that may be the case. But one of them was Lot thirteen, Lot fifty in St. Hackney. And you got a one acre lot that in section twenty-two seven, Amelville subdivision lot, Aiden and Frank subdivision. And then the eighty fifty-three, being a lot in one and four, of J C Calhoun something. That was the last prime, you know, to wear it up sweet the other day on media.
I, I want to ask, uh, in my position, if you're a commissioner, to, uh, Commissioner Page, if you're quite there just now, I think we've already put here a statement, can we just go and, and do something different? Like say, oh, this one's called Habitat for Humanity, even though somebody tells, I don't know yet, but I was reading, I asked you it.
In my position, you see, that you've advertised and for sale, um, you've gotten, uh, bids on it. And, uh, people who do say the bid, um, citizens of your county generally speaking, I think every one of this local folks, right?
Oh.
Pretty local.
The first one, Mr. Wood Salt, Saint Nicole.
That's a, that's a pay around an A. Yeah.
Yeah.
He's in the first.
Yeah.
He's a lady, isn't he? So-
I think the Centrex is local. And the, and the one that's Benzinger, he worked, he was kept stuck out.
Definitely.
And then Mike Anderson is with one there along. And Chris Patrick, I'm not sure which-
My point, my point in this is, okay, he's generally speaking, the local people made a good face bid. Now maybe love. But, but Mr. Page, that's a very good question. Well, I mean, have them buildable? Well, if they are buildable, then they're going to build up, build on it. And you may get some taxes at some point. You know, they did facts for two thousand twelve and two thousand-
Well, we had one that was both six and then twelve and two and three. One is three five and fourteen tax deed. So, so they're five years old, you know.
Five bids.
After they go through the tax deed process, they have to stay in county, county, nine for three years.
Yeah.
Well, we're here for company that last time we did this. There was a lot over in Elway to the subdivision. So it was, you know, fifty dollars. I don't know what the board wants to do.
Mr. Rooney?
I feel that it's gonna rest. Somebody won't pay that forty, even though it's the cheap price. It's, it's gonna go on the tax roll and maybe all of them, somebody build out and, and, and it'll be behind the, uh, my feel.
The only thing, question that I had is since we have advertised and been good faith on it, then these people have put in a bid. Now, I think what you said, Commissioner Page, was a really good idea. But I think perhaps that in the future, that might be something that we would want to, when they come up next time, just go ahead and say, are there any, ask, are there many that don't want us, then give habitat or whoever a camp?
I'm happy with it.
And before we go out and maybe, maybe do all this. But I, I like that idea. Well, see, the only problem with that is that we don't have no way of coming through the bill or not. The people who's gonna deal, the one needing to do that. I don't have time to pull the money.
But I'm hoping if you're the doctor, couldn't you know?
You can, you can, it's in the plus line for you. I, I, I'm fine with it. So you go ahead and move on. You said, we have a time, go ahead and tell them.
I think, Mr. Rapp, when Mr. Rapp gets through a frame, some of them will, they have type of a vague. And, and, and somebody, especially somebody puts, you know, twelve hundred dollars in one, he, he must not look at it and think it's buildable. So he wouldn't be buying a hundred and twelve hundred dollars.
Okay, so, um, Madam Kirk, do we go with each parcel, mangle out and then let the board throw on it?
What I would do is give a motion for all of them to get, we would just record this examination in the morning.
Well, we've got, um, two parcels that have two bidders on it.
Right. The fourteen oh eight, you're going to accept high deed, which is Centrex Properties subdivision. It's a-
And then another is a thousand.
Yes.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion. I'll say it.
Okay, well, motion by Commissioner Bill to accept the bid with the highest one. We have a second by Commissioner Page. Can you quote the question? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye. Motion carries. Consider items five through eleven A. This one, I knew, eleven A was added. The board should consider a request to point two, and the Turridge Development Council, that's the C D C board member, as presented by Don Taylor, Turridge Development Director. And as I read through, uh, Tom Watson and Sue Allen Weaver were the two that were set to us for approval. Is there a motion?
No, I'm here.
Yes.
Before we get on motion, normally I'm looking at these tax, the point folks, they release their application. And, uh, I do not know one of these folks, uh, I guess it would be appropriate to ask anybody about Mr. Todd. I know Mr. Weaver, he's been here a few times. But I don't know Mr. Todd, Ross.
Well, um, did, um, did you want to go on Simone Weaver at the end? Does everybody know Simone Weaver? Or does everybody want to get the application from both of these? Could we?
I think that would be another thing.
Yes. And I'm not sure, um, and I'm not be here tonight. I am not sure if they take an actual application because the requirements are so rigid as far as what type of, um, what type of individuals they're looking for. Um, because I know for these, it was no tell to tell owner manager was one of the spots of the president. So we can certainly ask Dawn if, if, if they have an application. And, and you want to just handle this one? I'm just, I'm just saying, and let's see if it's just, and just tell them that it's not the, the, we don't doubt that they're recommending, but just be considered with more politics.
And while these is a hotel, hotel owner office, I mean, we can watch, or either off.
We can. And if they don't have an application, and I don't know if they do or not, but we can certainly help them.
A little, two books, yeah.
Sure, yeah. No, sir, we can. Okay, so we'll pay you that until we hear back from them.
My team's family.
Okay, right, we want to make the page, the second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time. Motion carries Constitutional officers, other governmental units, number thirteen. The board should consider approval of interlocal agreement with Dixie, Jefferson, and Madison County for nine one one call transfer and routing as the bid is by Kennedy Morrison, nine one one coordinator. Good evening, Ty.
Good. How you doing?
Good, good.
So in our state, in that for nine one one, it states an agency, we didn't get authorized, that we have it for everyone. It's never been ready. So all of the stating is the fact that you get calls from Madison County, it has to send, and we transfer back to Brock County, we think the Dixie is for us. Okay, any questions from the board?
Man, I just want to make sure. Cause I was in Mexico with, last certain, land lake, and I settled. I called Jefferson, I called nine one one, Jefferson County picked it up. They looked at it, said you were in Leon County, we had called Leon County. It is, it was two hundred and twenty. Me and my son were rescued by twelve o'clock. And mixed with blood.
Yeah, huh?
Yes.
I mean, wrong, y'all get.
Think much, I mean, wrong, you get. Then you get no fraud at all. You got them accused like, no, I get no fraud. Two hundred and forty, an hour and forty.
Okay, any other-
But it ends with a white lock.
Any other questions or anything? If not, we're motion to approve.
I see.
Motion by Commissioner, we have a second by Commissioner Murphy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're telling the board to consider a request to allow the sheriff's office to keep reimbursement for all city deputy details and special events, April first through April the thirtieth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, as presented by Sheriff Wayne Taggart, Southern County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
The same request was made two years back in April, I believe, when we told you would be back. We don't know what the amount is, but we don't budget this, just the overtime. Which is also how we pay for the load ramps until we get to the immersion counties, the same stuff.
So you just stated that this, this is not budgeted or not budgeted?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Okay.
I, when I read all of it, Marty, I assumed that when we did your budget for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, that you would budget it for salaries and other things.
We, we budgeted for a little bit over time. We don't budget for very much. But we budgeted that for if we have a store or something like that. These all need details. We don't know how many we're gonna have. So we don't budget for that.
Normally with departments or constitutional officers, you think you're too fine with the rest. When they need money, it comes forward and we do a, a resolution, or we appropriate some new money, pardon, the budget. Would you, Jack, turn it that money over us and then come back and run a meeting and say, I need fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars or whatever, and handle it like we do for other constabulary?
I, I have no idea. I mean, back in April, we did the same thing. You got, they all-
Well, I was probably, could have been mistaken made back then.
And would you repeat again, what you wanted them to do?
Well, there's a normal process that we follow. For example, if solid waste, can't pay the bill out of their budget of money, that's all that went there. They come to the board and the law that puts in a request, the good department, supervise the election. They tell them, we, we need two thousand dollars, we got a lucky one. And then we appropriate some money for the budget profit. The way you do it, we just sit.
That's typically a transfer, if I may, from contingency. So because it's, it's a transfer from reserve, we come to the board and ask for funding. And I think the only difference that Marty's saying is that they have the revenue, they just want to, they got, they want to keep it. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, the revenue comes back to the sheriff. The Mud Ranch writes the sheriff a check. You guys write us a check. Everybody writes us a check. We don't budget that money, but we have spent that money already. It's because we're not asking you to do anything other than make the budget whole again, of the budget that we ask to operate with.
So in other words, you do the work, then they reimburse you for the work that you do. They're paying you for the work that you done.
Right. And we don't know how many we're gonna have. We don't know if the Mud Ranch is gonna hand mud boxes. It does, and they usually hire us to do that. Buckeye just hired us to put on this pipeline stuff while they did the blasting and things like that. There's just no way to budget that in our budget. We have no idea how many people are gonna ask for. And they usually pay us within thirty days. So the money comes back in. So we're not worried about, you know, not having the money from the budget, as long as you got allowance, keep the money that comes back in.
So as long as you got some money, one way or the other, it's, it's, you know, makes
Right, and we don't know how many we're gonna have, we don't know if the mud ranch is gonna hand mud boxes, it does, and they usually hire us to do that. Buckeye just hired us to put on this pipeline stuff while they did the blasting and things like that. There's just no way to budget that in our budget, we have no idea how many people are gonna ask for it, and they usually pay us within thirty days. So, the money comes back in, so we're not worried about, you know, not having the money from the budget as long as you got allowance, keep the money that comes back in.
So, as long as you got some money, one way or the other, it's, it's gonna make this fun.
Well, I mean, you're asking us to come back.
Well, that's me consistently, well, what other companies will ask you? Okay, I mean, you know, this is my point.
My point is that supervisor elections didn't spend that money if they overtime to somebody else, they came and asked you for, for the money out. We had to spend this money upfront, just like we have to spend the boat ramp money that you guys give us back. So, it's the same concept, we spend that boat ramp money, uh, we have to pay the debt. We, back in the day, when Sheriff Williams did this, we never even paid for it, the workers that went into a reserve debt deposit. And then he wrote a check from. Well, when Sheriff Fattig took over, the officer said, you cannot do that. You have to pay the people that work for the comp, you have to pay their state retirement, anything they're doing like that. So, then we decided that we could take it out of overtime, we charged the person enough to cover the overtime costs, the benefits costs, and we're paying now already upfront, we're just asking to keep the money so we can have it in the budget again, to continue to operate.
I, I just, I'm sorry, it was my question, but if you, if it's not budgeted, and whoever asks y'all to do some detail for them, you don't come to us and ask them, can you do the detail, you just go ahead and do whatever they've asked you to do.
That's correct.
And you agree upon a price.
Correct.
And they pay you for the job done.
Correct.
So, what's on this?
Well, we've been with the motions, we did it through the campaign.
I mean, I don't think what the issue is. I mean, I, I, I'm trying to understand what the issue is.
I, it's like playing with, with the grant, you know, we didn't get the grant until after, we, we employed two people for that grant, and we didn't have it in our budget, but we got reimbursed from the grant, and we're just asking to keep the money we got reimbursed.
Marty, I'm part of the, the, that the worst person in the world is gonna fix, I do, is you at Parkland shit. I support what, I support what I share, I still support, and I now better understand it. But, so you know where I'm coming from. Uh, suppose I went to Morris, this is a long story, I don't know, but I won twenty million dollars, and I decided I wanted to go into business by under this cap, I don't know how I margin, two, uh, I should help four or five men. I'm, I'm, you know, I sit down, I look at that budget, I'm like, budget, million dollars, just want the salary, just want to go now, and you said, your job is, you go out here, you wanna do a job outside, around enough, put it up off the shower, something like, anything you know, dollars. Now, let me go back, should I, I don't know, or should you keep it? You convinced me, I think, that there's no double dip.
No, there's no double dip, and then whatever class at the end of the budget, you're, you're gonna get back anyway, just throw it back in.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, say it.
Well, and what is your motion? To, to allow the sheriff to keep the reimbursement?
Right.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Murphy, we have a second from Commissioner Murphy, any, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries.
Number sixteen, privacy.
Thank you.
Not giving you our time, I, I.
Our fifteen, the board to consider approval of request to allow the sheriff's office to keep reimbursement from grants, mobile crisis agreements, and board sheriff's risk management fund, check in the amount of a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents, from date four, four, twenty nineteen, to nine thirty, twenty nineteen, as presented by Sheriff Wayne Paggott.
Same, same process, the mobile grant we didn't, we didn't get until the budget was started, we didn't get the, um, um, victim's advocate grant until after the budget was started, so we're paying these people, this is just money coming back in to cover their salaries. Now, I, I will say though, like, in, for the Florida sheriff's risk fund check, I think that was for like seven thousand dollars, that was for a total of a billion, they reimbursed us for a total of a billion, total of a billion.
All right, that was part of it or anything?
No, ma'am.
Now, Marty, you know, if you've done it through nine thirty, that's the end of the budget, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
If you should happen to receive more than this money, you gotta come back to this board because every time you get, and revenue, they're gonna, your board, this board has approval for this, type of ticket, two weeks.
Yes, ma'am, we don't anticipate that there'll be any more than this, and if, um, and if it goes to nine thirty and we find it is, you're, you're getting it all back anyway, we just have to come to the board and explain how much the difference was.
Is there a motion to approve?
I agree.
Got a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Gibbs, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. Okay. Our sixteen, the board to consider approval in our local agreement with the Taylor County School Board and the Taylor County Sheriff's Office for emergency management for emergency sheltering in Taylor County, as recommended by Christie and the emergency management director. Good evening, Patty, good, how are you today? This might be raining, we had.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're here to discuss a lot more on what we talked about in the workshop, the school board here also. Um, I think we need a little more clarification of what we talked about. Now, the past three hurricanes, the school board has received one hundred percent of the total of, that they claimed, that they reached one emergency for. Now, that may not always be the case. Uh, the, the governor chose to give one hundred percent to the declaration. If the declaration comes back that dealing with the seventy-five, twenty-five, then he would get back the seventy-five percent. So, the school board is here, does he have anything else to say about the agreement? What we're doing is we're actually, the county is responsible for sheltering. The, what we're doing is treating the school board as a contractor. On our reimbursement for the past two years, they are stated as contractors. They, they don't, you know, ask the shelter to be open, the county does. So, it's the county's responsibility. So, do you have anything else?
And the school district gives the, uh, buildings, provides the buildings, and some of the labor, and next to these, sort of start buildings, and food staff, and helps run the shelter, and we encourage some of those expenses, what, what you would be, be, uh, what, what we'd be paying us back with, with the board, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, when I was preparing for the last meeting, when y'all think, um, and I read through as much of that stuff as I could, um, I recall reading where, uh, I believe there's a, there's a law that the schools, and I guess that there is, um, recently, and they, and they can accommodate that category, whatever it is, that the schools are mandated to provide shelter when we declare a state of emergency, but we're no longer the ones that declare a state of emergency, though, right? Don't y'all do that?
Well, the county, but it's that, I mean, you come to us and then ask us, and we act, and, and that's the problem.
You did a, you did all the one, and declare a state of emergency, yeah.
But, so, so, I mean, the, the schools are obligated, they're obligated, uh, and so we just want to reimburse, you know, we have to reimburse the expenses. Now, there was a mission before that last year that the expenses weren't on. Um, but if y'all agree, did we get one hundred percent repayment back on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Four thousand something dollars.
Four thousand dollars.
It would take a little while to get it, right?
It was very fast this year, like eight months, in time to pass it, that's been a teacher.
Uh, did you tie our money up or something?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanna make it clear, Christie and I have, have tried to get as much information as possible, but I just wanna make it clear that depending on the type of storm, what's going to happen is the school will receive one hundred percent reimbursement, but the board may not, and that's what's going to come with it, I mean, whatever.
Or it could be fifty percent, I mean, it could just, you know, a whole disclosure, I mean, it could be.
How, that's, that's fine, it could be nothing, but storm, it may be coming to Taylor County, it takes a different track. We still have to prepare, we may have to eat the call, that's just the bottom line.
And you may be sheltering a lot, but you're not saying, but, I mean, if they're in, it's just on the path.
And, uh, there's something about that, it was, um, yes, ma'am.
Make y'all feel a little bit better, um, they cited, uh, two fifty-two point thirty-eight, you gotta read on, um, two and six, I went back and did a little research myself, um, because if you leave, um, two fifty-two point thirty-nine, this is by episode thirty-eight naturally, it says, "The political subdivision, which is aided pursuant to this section, that also paid in universal political subdivisions, furnishing such aid for compensation paid to employees under this section during the time of the rendition of such aid in cowed to spray, the actual cowl and maintenance to such employees while they are in the pay." So, um, such reimbursement shall include any amount paid or due compensation to their personal injury or death, uh, such employees are engaged in anything, but that's not really what I'm talking about. Employee, you know, so they, um, I think, they, you know, correctly, and correctly, I'm honest with myself, they may have cooked there, or they've been, if we can notice up there, they may very well be paid. So, it concerned me when y'all were asking the question, you know, both political subdivisions and, um, we're asking y'all to, uh, you know, rid of land in emergency, and everybody's paying taxes, blah, 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 but I wanted to make sure that what you were saying was correct, and I went and looked at it, and that's what the statute said. Now, you may not like it.
Not at all.
But I'm being exact, you know, we said that we have a fight, but I don't mind it, it's part of them.
I do, I do want to, um, explain that we will be very thorough when they give us their bill as emergency management, we will follow penal guidelines to make sure that they are, are charging us correctly, and that they are reimbursable. Now, with Red Cross, if they come in.
And you gotta watch them.
We work well with that, um, Lord, the expenses, I mean, what's gonna happen is our SIR team and his, and Red Cross, they're gonna be running the shelter with minimal staff. Now, when you had your, um, hurricane armor, it was staffed by school staff, that was twelve thousand something dollars. This past year, uh, it was four thousand.
Well, armor was, was actually, a lot of those expenses were, were cleaning expenses because we had five hundred people in it. It was also, uh, air conditioning expenses, we went with air conditioning for, for the whole week, at full blast because there were so many people in there, there were a lot of expenses of that nature. We had Red Cross in there for the, the labor, and we, and we paid overtime labor for our guys, unload the cops and, and setting up everything. We had a lot of those kinds of expenses to help, to help five hundred people feel secure in, 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 in the shelter. But, uh, last year, there was, there was only, there was only forty or fifty people there, so all of it was just, was just our people, la, labor of our people, but we decided really not to go in that direction anymore because we're gonna use SIR and Red Cross volunteers, and only the three, only the three, uh, individuals, the facilities person, and cook, and the custodians, who won't have any more, uh, voting supplement, uh, expenses for, uh, for, for our labor.
And, and, and I know that we sometimes, we didn't have very many people there at all, but the condition of air conditioning is still the same if you've got five people or.
Well, no, because we air conditioned the whole building at that time, full blast, if we, if we, if we had, uh, if we had the fifty people, of course, you don't, you don't have the load, and you also only have the air conditioning, the cafeteria, but we really probably wouldn't even, wouldn't even claim that, wouldn't even look at that, because we, we air conditioned the whole building twenty-four, seven, and it was really working hard to keep that, and, uh, we decided to look at the difference between the year before and that year, and we claimed, claimed that, of course, you got one hundred percent that year, and I think, I don't think we even got the money until, uh, um, until anyone paid this way.
Well, it is what it is, and, um, I, I really appreciate y'all, you know, doing things that you're doing by asking the SIR people, the Red Cross to help out, and that will cut down a little bit. So, is there a motion to approve this agreement?
I agree, exactly.
Okay, now, motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. Thank you, y'all very much.
That's pretty good, along with my opinion on that.
Okay, county staff, um, and the seventy-six, the board's in civil service, uh, this is the extinguisher, extinguisher to the volunteer fire assistance grant program, through four or five, in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty cents, for the purchase of five water bunkers here, as presented by Melody Pop, grant director. Now, okay, I was gonna say, I was really, uh, and we'll get some, our max was five thousand, two ten, seventy-three, we'll get that back, yes,
it's a fifty-fifty grant, yeah, so that fifty-two, ten, seventy-two is, or seventy-three is the fifty percent we'll get back.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I agree, exactly.
You've got a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries, number eighteen, the board to consider approval of the total for revision and turnoff permit as presented by Hank Allen, public work director. This is a duty.
I was talking to your board for a while, uh, it's a long, and we didn't, I don't know if y'all are aware or not, but, uh, we thought of some of its themselves, and, uh, they're, they're getting a lot of limestone, and for five dollars, a lot of limestone costs, it can work from a hundred fifteen to a hundred twenty dollars a light. So, what we've come up with is, we've made a list of, of three popular contractors in the county, uh, we can all the way back to this. What we would like to do is, is keep, I hate to raise the price of permits, I mean, we can just leave a price permit to fame and have a contractor go in and have the citizens just pay the contractor direct, put the highway in, and put limestone on it, we can go back and expect it after this is done, and approve it or deny, you know, make them fix it, I think it's a big.
What do you recommend that?
I would, I would like to see, uh, have a list of contractors handed out when they buy a pile of limestone. Let them contact one contractor, install a pipe, we go out and expect it, we approve it, same time.
And then.
Five dollars, and then take a five dollar, and the five dollar cost, with that, take that cost with you, say. Yeah, because we're up in that red all time, going from place to place, looking at one thing, and first, and then another, so it, it really doesn't cost us any extra swing by and look at the turnoff, we'll help it out. I would stand right in there.
But there's the second part.
I, I've got a second part to it.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I, I'm sure, I'm aware of that, we have an issue, and I don't know if we need to get this, sorry, I don't know if we're, make ordinance or, but we have some secondary access to some property in the county that the most people have, uh, opinions about, and we would like to maybe draw up something where we can actually deny, take it, turn off, when it's coming off the collector road, when they already have one entrance on the low volume rate, um, and I don't know how we would even handle that.
But, to me, that would be a policy, instead of an ordinance, you know, you have that right to, to deny it, you know, as long as you deny it, it's not appreciated, you know, someone's down there, I, you know, arbitrary and political.
We just, we want to bring it from the board and see, you know, I, I, I'm with you, I, I think I ought to be able to like, look, you've got one driveway, you, you don't think you're coming off this major road into another, I mean, you already have one, you got that, right?
You call, you call.
Thank you.
I think I made over, one, two, three, I come on the line curve.
Boy, they're so loving in your district. Yeah. I think if somebody wants an extra, they need to pay for it some blue, so, and, and.
And another thing, too, once they install these pipes, we take ownership of them and maintain them from then on.
Right.
So, that's an extra expense, too.
Yeah, you'd have to clean it out, put stop sign up, and everything else.
Right, and then we'd have to replace it.
Right. Uh, that's right.
Okay, so, if, if this is recap, then, um, uh, you, you wanna continue charging the five dollars and have a list of the contractors to give to the person replacing this, and then they go out and pay him, or whatever, and then you'll, you'll inspect.
Do the five inspection.
And then, for a, a second road, um, you wanna be able to, to make that decision yourself, or?
Me, self, or my roach is for the team.
Okay, is there a motion to that, to that?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a motion by Commissioner Murphy? Is there a motion by Commissioner Murphy, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion?
I'm like, now, that, if they want a second one, that'll be, or they don't, can't get it, they can't get it.
Well, if, if they already have a, a, a entrance to their property off a low volume rate, we'd rather keep that entrance and use that entrance rather than applying another on a collector road, which tells us...
It is their expense if they want it or not, and putting as many as they want, they don't pay for it.
Not that, not that, not that, not that. Now, I know some people like the, the loop turn offs in a hand, if they put them on, yes, circle drive, if they put them on a low volume road, I'm fine with that, but this is specifically dealing with another access to the property off the collector road.
Now, you may have a large portion of the cost. I've heard it, if one of them is a collector own, one of them, a high volume, a regular road.
Yeah.
And you may own a large portion, maybe more than one turn off. Because I, I can see what Commissioner Moody's talking about there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, the policy you're talking about is you met this judgment.
What you want to do is you want to, uh, cover the maintenance and put the lime rock and maintenance on the one. And if they wanted more than one, you know, like you said, if they had a long piece of property down the side of the road, had a public road and they had ten acre ground side of the road and they wanted to put a house out of the end.
Well, we would need still the, the authority to deny access that we deem dangerous or, or safety issues.
Right, okay, I'm on that.
You know what's gonna happen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. They're gonna be standing right here, wanting the old rule here decision.
I, I'll put it, if, if, if I can go out and talk to people, I, I can, I can, uh, they can see a lot of the safety issues and concerns we have.
Well, you know, you've made that determination that it would be a safety issue and, and, and maybe the tour route that's involved with safety, whatever, but, you know...
I'm happy to work with you, I'd like to speak with them and, and, and fresh, your concern, whatever, the issues with the turn off where they got it. Uh, and you may be able to walk around the property with them, find a better place.
Yeah.
And, and if they were going, like, for instance, your son, you have a ten acre, you want him to build that home of the end, you would de- that acre to him and then he could go get a permit for his, you know.
Yeah.
So, it, it wouldn't need somebody from building or, or using their property, it's just that thing, I'm gonna be, I got, I find.
And we're not, I have to say anyway, we're, we're working with them, we can, but we do know a safety issue, we need to have the authorities say no, you cannot do it.
So, another scenario I'm thinking about is, say you've got a fifteen acres and, um, you'd wanna put a rental on it. You already have rentals with an ECA. And back on that over here on the other side, that may be one of those, you know, roads, you wanted to put something else there and have a problem, but still, all the cost is still in your name, now...
Look, if we go out and look at it, even though it's coming off collector road, we do not deem that a safety issue. We do grant, grant you the application for the, I can, I can, okay, and then what's the collector road? There's a high volume road, I, I should say a high volume road or low volume, yeah. There's a higher volume traffic channel on collector road.
Any other questions? If not, we already have a, a bunch of them in the center, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign, sign, motion carries. Thank you. Next, the board to consider approval of this, uh, Florida fifth and block five conservation committee, SFC, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, SDP, and United States Coal Engineers, applications for re permitting Keating Beach Canal one-way markers to include new markers signed as intended by Victor Blanco, marine agent.
Who's that, you're looking at, you know?
Yes. Now, so, the, the extent, if I, if I recall in the packet, that the cost is, is to be determined, is that what those...
If the cost for the permit is with the, the Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, I heard you...
It's the only one where I might charge a fee to get permits, but, uh, I'm still waiting for a reply from DDP. But I want, I can, I need to send the application to be sure which, if we are charged, how much it might be.
And who's not paying for it?
We have, the county has to pay for it. But it's very likely, it's very likely that it's not gonna be any, any cost, but just to be aware that, be fine.
Any other questions from the board?
If there's a cost, that's, that's what we're...
I'm not sure, at this point, we don't have that, um, yet. But after, if I know, I will get, uh, LaWanda know, and she, she will respond. And you need to discuss, the further discussion, I'll be, more than that, um, we'll get to discuss that.
For the public information, why is this going on?
Um, the situation is that, uh, one of the property owners in the, um, Keating Beach Canal is demanding the recall of one time that was placed right in front of his property that after virging and remaining, he was turned down. It, it, at the end, it seems like the FWC permit that is issued, that, um, that marker was not permitted, even if because he, he, he was there for a long time. Uh, actually, I'm including in these new permits, the two buoy, because those two buoy are not permitted either. So, uh, just to be in compliance with, with the regulation, I'm including that new time plus two buoy. Uh, and I also would like to know if there is, if you are aware of other requests from owners in the area who might want to, or include something new. The thing is that we have all the, all, all then two thousand flat nine, which is the one that, uh, established the area and sometimes it's even include the, the markers that need to be replaced. So, if, if we are gonna, all the time that somebody wants to include a, a marker in front of their property, we also have to follow the regulations that say if there is a hot earth navigation, there is a justification to replace a marker. But if there is none in hot earth, we don't have to do it.
Okay, so, I was down in Canal at Keating Beach, I noticed that some of the no way terms are looking really bad. Who's the places though?
In Keating Beach?
Keating Beach Canal.
Where was placed it last year, actually? Yeah.
All of the no way terms?
All of the no way terms, yes, I just see the no way terms, they were all replaced last year, yeah. You wanna get the payment, but you wanna get the payment, the payment comes. Yeah, and I also wanted to, um, make you aware of another, I received another call from a, a homeowner who's been had she, about one of the new times that we, that were placed, we're replacing the times, uh, for all the markers and five of them, those markers were missing. So, we contracted B and L to install these new five times. It turns out that one of the times, one person complained and that it's too close to the dock and he cannot park his boat properly. So, uh, I explained, we have the permit, we provide the contractor with the co- with the coordinator issuing the permit. Uh, so, I'm doing, go there and check that, uh, and then go with a recommendation to LaWanda and we've committed a petition, hopefully we'll see something. But I, I need to go out in the water and recheck the coordinate, that's the first step.
Five times with this?
Yeah.
That probably counts for a lot.
Yeah, only for one.
Any more questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion. Sure.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign, sign, motion carries, thank you. General residence, number twenty, the board to consider adoption of resolution to permit divorce, to permit divorce instead of fine amounts for violation of this regulation as intended by the county administrator. Is there a motion to read this resolution, my pop?
I'm moving.
We got a motion by Commissioner Dan, second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign, sign, motion carries, what's that?
Resilience of the board, county commissioners, area county board, for two of these sections, two dash one twenty-three of the code of ordinance, which protects divorce, intercepts a fine amount for violation of the code, instead of resiliency setting a fine for violation of the NCC regulations, subsection four two dash six sixty-four E of the code of ordinance, section eighty-eight.
Thank you. We would have all this last time, are there any, any questions or anything? If not, is there a motion? So, thought was resolution.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign, sign, motion carries, item twenty-one, the board to discuss, to further discuss solid waste special assessment as intended by county administrator.
Just to continue the discussion from one of our last study works, uh, where the, the board gave some guidance that, and we would like to consider changing the special assessment for solid waste to one hundred and forty dollars per grade particle. Um, and I spoke to this county attorney and of course he will need guidance from the board to prepare that ordinance.
Okay.
Now, I mentioned that, again, what the, you have to go and you have special assessment. Number one, that it benefits the land, the number of the property, and number two, the proportion equally enough. Okay, um, I have information that Dixie County is trying to do the same thing. And their co-boards, according to their attorney, did not want to do a study on it. Uh, and he, again, he called me before, I did a conference, I said, well, my recommendation is to, to investigate whether you do the study or not, so it will be a two later on, should I, uh, following the rules on special assessment. Been years in, in the state of Florida, about two or three, I mean, what happened in Madison County. Um, and I mentioned to him that I had called the neighbor's firm, the law neighbor, to, uh, acknowledge something. It happened to, of, 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 law passed away ten years. Um, you know, just a really good guy who, who protects and sets the rule of the whole state, who lives in Brooklyn and, uh, so forth, he came down. So, I mentioned that to him, I was gonna be, and I had called also the neighbor's firm too, to talk something about fifteen minutes and didn't really talk to me anything, which I was, which I was happy about. Um, but when I talked with the county attorney, who's Michael Steen, for Dixie County, he said, I'm convinced that, that he needs to call the neighbor's firm also. And the neighbor's firm, it agreed, and I believe this is the correct day, on September fifth, at one thirty, he got to the board, county commissioners meeting here, so, meeting of their boards to discuss assessment, to show exactly how they need to do it or if they wanted to do it that way and do it correctly. And Michael, um, invited me to come, uh, said, well, I certainly would like to. And I talked to LaWanda about this and I thought that if, I don't wanna go down there, um, with, in, and, and have them think that we're trying to, to so turn on and they're gonna be, be, they're like, I don't want them to think that is a practical matter. But I would like to go down there and I would like to carry one or two commissions, carry two commissions, we have to advertise. So, I'd like to have, I want y'all to go there, just so you'll get a listen to the presentation down there. But before I would say that we do that, I was going to, for, the girl she told me at the time, but I wanted to talk to the county coordinator, um, to, uh, him, and, 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 I always want to call him Anderson, I don't know why, but to, to make sure that it's so paid for me to come and take one of my meetings with him. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, um, so, um, do we wanna do that and who wants to go?
I'll go. I don't mind going.
He's proud of...
Anybody else wanna know?
Second, let's see, I've had to sit in our, oh, those preparations.
I believe the first, oh, appearing is on the ninth, isn't it? September ninth is one, September sixteenth is the other.
Good, one, you know, that's one...
September ninth, five, eight, nine?
September ninth?
It's not one.
That's a Thursday, September fifth. I don't believe we have anything scheduled for that.
I would also want to share you one other scenario. I remember a fact when we did special assessments over in that neighboring county, in, uh, Lafayette County. And this was on, at the start of it, and I was terribly nervous about, about doing it, of course, because it was new. Um, but what they did was when they, uh, passed their, um, special, that, that, that provided that if a party made less than the minimum amount of, what, uh, of the poverty level, uh, of the poverty level, that person would come in with a copy of their tax return, sign and activate it and the board would weigh that assessment.
We did that now, did we? We did, two hundred and ten, seven, the poverty level on that, that's why we have to do it, of course.
We did that?
Yeah, and then you have to transfer them to somebody who's there, things like that.
That's not a special assessment, it's, it is.
Got it.
I wonder...
We already did that. The, the statute do not allow for any, but the board do allow that, has to transfer it. LaWanda knows, come from the, it will come from the, you have to, um, reserve to some, and I think ours is probably got himself a lot of... Now, y'all, y'all talking about the, uh, are we even sure for people who live in, in, they're incoming back out, I don't think they lost their markups and following that today, they didn't, yeah, they didn't come either.
Well, I'd consider it, yeah, that's, that's why I'd like to go and listen to you. I like to do it, I like, I might, I might like to go. You know, I don't care, I, at our meeting, I made this proposal that we, 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 we talked about coughing a little bit. And we got no trust in their all. Are we, is there somebody just next to us? Or is anybody changing that, is that what they want to do?
I have a pen, my mom, have you?
I haven't changed mine either.
Is there anybody else?
No.
Well, I wasn't going in.
So, so he, uh, I mean, I asked him that he would like to take somebody to listen, but I think wants to go, so, um...
I'd love to hear what all the say, and say, you know, and, you know, I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to hear. And, but, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much set on taking everybody.
Yeah, me too.
And the thing they just said, that if somebody's in the poverty line of, of finance or whatever, they, they can get free anyway. But, I mean, we're really not putting somebody in a bind in a bind, we're just, for ones that can afford a face, be a face.
Do you realize what I'm talking about, I'm talking about, um, the, about the dangers of not doing it appropriately and what happens in Madison County?
Mm.
They had to get all the money back, and they, and they, they also had to pay a whole lot of recovery fees on that, it was a big loss. I testified the, what the recovery should be, and I was touched on it all in Madison County. Um, I just don't want us to get, or y'all to get into that trick bag, that's, that's all I'm saying. And that's why, you know, I'd like for y'all... Um, I just don't want us to get, or y'all to get into that strick bag, that's, that's all I'm saying, and that's why, you know, I'd like for y'all to go and listen, um...
Do you set the joint meeting, just going, what are we going to do?
Sure, what we're going to do, advertise, I'm going to call Tim Alexander, and say, Michael Osteen has invited me to come, I'd like to bring my commissioners there, to listen, you're not going to make any kind of decision, you're just going to listen, do you have any objection to that? And then we advertise that y'all are going to that meeting, just like when you go to, yes, a party, or something like that, but...
And when is it, September fifteenth?
At one thirty, that's what he told me.
So y'all remember in adopting some of these lawsuits for the N S D U? And you know, you have some areas where the houses are a lot, like the mother highway, R O, and they had special assessment on the backside of these people, and they had to come back and change all that, because that landowner that takes that other road out there did not derive any special remedy from the N S D U, so you had to, you got to be comfortable with that.
I'm not advocating anything, it's just a fact that I want y'all to be fully aware, or others, and, 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 and understanding, uh, and I, it's just a learning experience for, for all.
Well, what, you know, it's, uh, um, what's frustrating to me is that most of the people that so far have objected to this, or the people with the most money, if you, if you can, if you can afford all of what it takes to hurt, and I may not tell you that, so last time, what is another dollar? What if you own a beach house, and another house, or a house, or something like that, if you own that, what is another, I mean, I just don't quite get it, you know? It's the people that have money, it seems like they're the ones that propose it to it, that's what is odd.
You have to be right, that's the one you're going to sue.
That's exactly right. I'm sure they will, but what's what?
That's what I'm getting at, I ain't giving away, hundred dollars a cent. I would remind all of us, including, I'm here, for several years, we charged money, kept the whole place. So, I buy most people's money, it's already out there. And then we change, it's because we're speaking and hollering, and we trap those people who change, it's my memory and writing, so we got some lot who's, uh, already hanging out there, so I could buy, give you all those charges, and y'all can use, and then I'm going to back.
Well, that would be nice, you think?
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, so, um, September fifteenth, well, that would have to, that more than one commission on maybe going, and where is the location, that we know yet, if it's not a, from, from this, I would hope we're not playing, I'll say that.
I'm aware.
And I already behind them, after you push, push very quick. I saw Alwanda, I crossed in, and you were up there, and you, and you, no luck, all stick.
Okay, so, well, well, someone will remember that.
I have on that, someone called Tim, and then I called Alwanda, and he did all set up. Two thirty, yes, and one thirty, three.
One thirty.
One thirty, but we're going to make sure of that date and time, and that they're not going to not let it come.
And we all got to him, right?
We got to him.
That already does the answer to that.
About, about the intention, that's probably about it.
Yes. Oh, this goes on to county administrator, I know it's going to soon, we'll be getting into more trouble. The Board, the Board to consider approval of draft construction engineering and inspection services agreement with Land Son Associates Inc., a trackback consultant, as intended by the county administrator. This is Dr. Redd, yes, this is the agreement where, um, the track, trackback consultants will provide the construction, engineering, and inspection services, and Land Son Associates would provide the grant administration and recording services. Um, the fixed price is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is the amount within the grant for these services, and if I'm as okay with this agreement, um, we have not gotten a letter back from him about this one, but it's considered, um, which is why I could not place it on the agenda without his, okay? Any questions from the Board?
Okay, what will we be responsible, always, A L, y'all do two, go?
The, hoping.
Always A L, hope.
And they are, um, eagerly awaiting from, the, the date to break around, I don't know, it will probably be in the fall, but we've already had to submit our first quarterly reports, so, so there's tracks are permanent on that part of the line.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, depending on Mr. Conrad, find it, you find it.
Okay, this is very nice. The construction, engineering, and inspection services.
Okay, thanks.
We have motion by Commissioner Page, Second White, Commissioner Kemp, all in person say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time. Motion carries, Adam twenty-three, the county administrator to discuss informational, um, has had a few of them.
Um, first of all, I, I, but some of y'all know that the lights, as they keep these, Dean Hatchy boat ramps have been installed, and as they keep these coastal parks, we still have some lighting to replace at by the park itself, but I'm very glad to say that we have gotten that behind us finally, and I think they look good. I, the only complaint I saw was someone commented that it was about time.
Yeah, I did, somebody commented about the, uh, the winter curtains, they look pretty good.
He said, about the source.
At Keats Beach Boat Ramp, at Dean Hatchy Boat Ramp, and at Keats Beach Coastal Park, we have them installed.
Good, okay, what about the, um, boat ramp, no light?
That was not the direction of the Board.
Yeah, but I did that. I, 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 I told you about, I got bombards the other night, well, we were less than forty miles from the dock, the center of the dock, and there was no light, we didn't know where it was. So, when the people came up with the big light, you know, the red light, and everything, and, uh, they got, they got talking, you know, one way those fellows at, Tom and his son, with only this twenty dollar vehicle, hey, we're right here, we're like, oh, you're right, so, so we were there together. That light was better than we even having it all once, but, I reckon one thing, we probably got a waterfall dock, and it was very good situation, we was not out of boats, you'd have to get out there, or people, anything like that, and then, you know, being neighbors, so, how to get, but, 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 do we have any light at the end of the board? Are they in electricity down there?
I would have to do a survey, see, I mean, it's...
We've got a lot of, though, but, I mean, they shot, more than, they're going, doesn't matter.
I would have to come back to the Board and report, if I can. Well, if you, if you're on a river, like, if you're on a whole river, which is, you know, not that wide, and you have, they have hooks in it, I'm just wondering what, what, you tell me what value would they be? I mean, you'd have to be close out close to the boat now, in order to see the light, right?
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I, I've been standing before, I was wondering, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's always going to get there, so...
You guys will know that in the...
I know that way.
Well, from, if, if you will recall, the purpose of these lights is really to add security at the boat ramp, and at the coastal park, um, for, for the parking area, um, not necessarily as a navigational aid, but more for security, but I'll be hap, you know, I'll be happy to bring back that information back to the Board at a later time, if you would like.
Well, something happened that about thirty minutes before the version unit got there, there was a truck that came to the unit, and that was on one truck in the park, not in that garage. He, well, he drove around the, from the, um, landing area, went to the truck, and we just wondered, would they wreck it in the truck, since it was that dark, and nobody was there, so, you know, I was parking there, it was, the truck was fielded, that was on a light, we saw, I mean, most of the light missed, but that was late, now that's not the river, so, most times, river, you know, that's one, you know, that's all.
There's, I think, all the sea access, pretty well, yeah.
Also, as an informational item, if you recall, there was a question at one of the recent Board meetings about the F A A D release for the properties, airport properties, um, and I did reach out to Abcon, they are our consultants for the airport, and received a letter back from Tim that basically states, upon completion of the funds transfer, it is understood that the F A A will provide a D release for the five parcels under consideration. So, those parcels would not be released until two thousand twenty-one, which is when we meet our financial obligation to provide grant math, um, for future airport grants. So, um, yeah, so, the concern that we have is that, you know, three years from now, when someone asks the same question, we would have to go through a chain of emails, and try to come up with the same information. So, I'm wondering if we should maybe send a draft agreement to the F A A, and see if possibly they would be interested in signing this agreement that, that basically captures what was stated in their email, and the information that we have. If the Board is in agreement or concurrence with that, I can send a draft agreement to Mr. Conrad, if he's okay with it, we can send it to Abcon, and ask them to reach out to the F A A, and see if they would consider entering into this agreement with us now, so at least we have that.
Like, they got a lot, how much would be that?
Uh, thirty...
Thirty something thousand?
Well, the total is, um, thirty-four nine seventy forty-six, and I believe we're in our second year of that agreement, because it will be twenty twenty-one before we're finished.
Thirty something thousand, and all broken, first, you standing it off early?
I don't know that it would be, I mean, from what I understand, that...
I like the contract, uh...
Okay, very professional, okay.
Okay, so we can, we'll move forward.
Yeah, I'll insert that, so...
Yes, sir.
I'm waiting for you, my bad.
Also, as an informational item, staff, um, would like to lift the old communication towers at the old highway toll station, and at the old hospital on W B O dot com, off the site. We have some historical data that shows that they have had some experience with water towers, and the price that has been did on those has ranged from four hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars, but just not having to pay to have those towers, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
We can't say that to them, but, which is wrong, it's different, yeah.
I think this is something that we can do internally.
You can do it internally?
Yes, sir, I bo, I believe we should lift those, and then, um, if they're sold, then we'll come back to the Board, and request that they be removed from the inventory.
That's a good idea.
Or we could have them declare surplus first, that was actually Tim's idea.
That's a good, good idea, I'll be a little sad.
Or we could declare, declare the surplus first, and then lift them on the W B O site, either way.
But I live alone.
Yes, don't get any of the light, you gotta lift the light standing in front of the train. Also, um, under informational items, I wanted to bring back to the Board that we did some checking on the Hampton Springs post site, and from what, from what I understand, um, when this was brought to the Board, this concept originally, we did not quite, we did not realize the situation with the underground wiring that's in place there, and it is just not sufficient to power an R V. So, staff has to have a power company, and basically what we're trying to do is weigh out, do we want the underground wiring, or do we want the overhead wiring?
Oh, really?
It is cheaper, but what we like to do, but it's not, there's an aesthetic, you know, point to that. So, we have requested pricing just for a price point, so we know whether or not we need to get close, or if we need to just have the overhead wiring, um, and when I asked staff, how long is all this going to take, worst case scenario? Um, and then there's the plumbing side, we have to, after the electrical is installed, we have to install a grinder pump, that's tied back to the subject system, so, the worst case scenario that they gave me was, I mean, it could be another two months before we have this resolved, and I apologize that it's taken so long, that's not the intent, this, when we came to the Board initially, obviously, we, we did not realize that it was going to be so complicated.
I was out there yesterday looking, and I checked for the overhead, mine is dark, and determined it is on the ground, and go from that, jump one feet.
It's five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet, I don't know now what truck I'm just, per foot is, but I would doubt we can beat Mr. Harrow, and the electrical contractor is going to do it, make the expectation, keep it in the middle.
So, it's, it's aesthetic, I think, it's, you know, it's part of it, but, we, we have a finite amount of money in the budget to get all of this done, so, I, I realize it's taking longer to try to explore the two options, but staff preference is to try to preserve the aesthetic as we can.
Do we have a backup?
We do.
All right, I know, when I was over trucking, if the landowner was, was dead against trenching...
Um, and we can do that.
You said about half a car, then you can expect to come along and put a cable in, and then you can go that couple of, so that's, to save a little bit of money, I thought you mentioned that.
Yes, sir, and, and so we are trying to work the issue as we can and how, but I'm, I'm afraid to report that we're not, it will be still, but it's time to be able to accomplish this, so we'll keep working on it, and I'll keep you updated on that. Um, also, on the tractor repair, um, we reached out to the, the repair shop today, the new motor to get here, hopefully sometime, or the new engine to get here next week, and then it's a matter of at least another week before that, all that repair work is done, so I would say, let's give it three weeks, and we can have that tractor back, um, on site.
And it's been a commission for how long now?
Several months.
It's been one, two, three, four, five, another, it's a...
It is a fairly new tractor, it's only four or five years old, I believe, and it was covered by insurance, um, but then we did have to go back to our carrier, um, and ask for them to reconsider the claim, because we felt like the payment was short, and that has taken us a little bit of time, for, because that was more, um, I believe, that's all that, that's all that I have.
Thank you, thank you. Um, please, we'll comment, there's some comments from the public, from all of the general, from out here. We've got to act as a member of our...
I'm in twenty-nine orange river side, Dean Hatchy. I appreciate this opportunity to make you aware of some of the things that's been happening in Dean Hatchy going back years. Uh, there are many of your county roads that end at the river. The traditional use that is being made of those county roads ends at the river, that they use for fishing, there's more kayak staying lost there now, and on some of them, there's even, over the years, been dirt rams, and those, the twenty foot longs have been ran, lost. I'm going back twenty, thirty years, thirty-five years. One of these street ends is Four Street Northwest. It is familiar with Dean Hatchy, there are condos that were built when all the woods are deep, and camping grounds, the road just west of there is Four Street. There's a canal that comes in to Four Street there. There's been a dirt raft there, as long as I can remember, I've been living in Dean Hatchy twenty years, talking to the people over there, previous to new campground, where... Talking to the people over there, previous to new campground where they're sat rings with these things. Uh, last week when I checked it, uh, there was actually a boat tied up in that canal overnight, November night. Uh... The other thing I'd like to bring to your attention tonight is that you own sixty acres in the northwest section of Steam Hatchie. You acquired this several years ago.
I remember that.
Right. Uh, right after you acquired, acquired it, a group of people in Steam Hatchie presented an architect who drew up plans to turn that sixty acres into a festival grounds for the town to the county. They presented a plan to the county administrator at the time. The access to that sixty acre is two. Second avenue northwest goes in at the south end of that sixty acre. Fifth Avenue northwest goes in at the north end. If that becomes a festival ground, both of those accesses were considered being an architectural drawing. Uh, the foresiders of people who knew that up was based on the Bigfoot Ranch Festival and had their help there for many years now. It's out growing around the community center. The last year, it used a school ground. They were gracious enough to let it in and use that as a place, part of their facility. Uh, maybe that can go on for a long time, maybe it can't. Hopefully, the sixty acres will be the festival ground size. It will be improved over time. And more and bigger festivals can come to the county to bring in revenue. That will thank the sixty times hiring of architects. Uh, if anybody has questions on the few things I've heard of, I'll answer them best my ability.
Um, just thinking, you know, if all our grandia, plans and ideas for these boat ramps are not going to perfection because of permitting and other things, I'm just wondering, um, could we change our, it was SBT? And, uh, 'cause I've got something else that I want to talk about with that. Also changing the SBT, is it something that that might be considered maybe?
We were approved with. And that boat ramp, you said the boat was left over, right? But that thing is probably returning to a county boat ramp really, too.
Oh, it's already. An unofficial county boat ramp that has been towards. If you go back to when new campground was there, that's at least forty years, it's not fifty. And that canal was, uh, to facilitate that campground because they owned both sides of Fourth Street.
And there're not but really one piece across between that road, that boat ramp and that sixty acre? Just a...
There's one piece property of the zone by three different people and now one person only.
Yeah, my son is not but he's right there on the curb right there.
Right. Uh, but the two access, that sixty acre, so a second avenue northwest and fifth avenue northwest.
It may be, it may be nice curb around, but it's part of the long curb boat ramp.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Certain words.
And, and the other thing that came to my mind, if you don't mind, I need to bring it up, is we did talk about, uh, with people in Steam Hatchie, that we were going to look at growth plans, you know? And that's something that we need to start moving towards because just like staff said, I'm telling you, I went to the, uh, Super Festival last, I loved it. There were so many good craft booths and food booths. And I mean, this thing, it's ginormous. If y'all have not been, you're missing a good, good festival down there. And you're right, it's not going itself. I can't believe this. It has come to this magnitude and this course through your time. Uh, but we are gonna have to, you know, we, we definitely are gonna look at these growth issues and, and, and even during, you know, during scholarships and all. I know that takes a short period of time every year, but still, it's becoming a real, a real problem.
I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Payne. I did reach out to him and haven't received a response yet. But I did reach out to see if that's something that they could, uh, suggest with, you know, China.
Sure, sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll probably see it. I'll give you the key, but...
Okay.
Just, did you ask him what was that?
What I forgot about, John?
I, I, I just wanted to bring this back up to your attention, you know? Do you, like, do you...
I had forgotten about, I did forget about that. I don't forget about calling Steam Hatchie, but I had forgotten about that sixty acre. And that, that was when we were, um, doing a whole lot of planning for this money several years ago. Remember that?
Yeah.
Because that's when they all conceived the...
Yes, right. They needed it so that you could give them the tax letter to...
Yeah.
Cut their, the tax, you got it.
Yeah. And that was about ten, twelve years ago, I remember.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I think it was, was it a fast boat ramp? And they come out in speculation when the order went up that canal, it wasn't, I don't remember.
They were looking west of the canal. If you looked at your street end on Fourth Street Northwest, you could get both ramps in there because part of it's already dug out. And it's the closest to the mouth of the river that you could get.
Mm-hmm.
And with the sixty acres, you would not have a problem with parking.
That's what we need to keep on our right on.
And that sixty acre is pretty high and dry, too. Pretty good hill.
Yeah, some of the things like they're not... That's why the elephants feed at the time, they got in trouble.
Yeah.
They cut the pines off, and they cut the pines, they never highlighted any laws or rules. When they went in there and dug up the stump, they did the wetland violation and they got fined. They had to replant it, they replanted it. And the county actually took care of it the last two years on the monitor with the replant. But if...
And what's your...
If you're active.
I have another question for you. David's friend, when I visited there a while back, I was really, um, it held a wonder. I did not tell me much about it going in there because the people that were there were snakes in there and, um, all kinds of stuff. It's dark, it's not pretty like it was there again. You have to get in it.
And I bring you up today with what happened in the last year and a half there. The weather and Mother Nature got involved. And during the storms last year, there was extremely high tide and high rain. And it raised the water to settle in the pool, higher than in the run to the extent where a canal or channels was made under the dam out into the run. Uh, it diverted probably thirty or forty percent of the flow to the run now instead of into the pool. Uh, at the same time, the water got a little darker on the surface. If you go in the water and you go up, under the surface, you can see clear above the pool. If you're up on the tide and you see people in the water from here up, it's a little dark. And down below, you can see their legs and their fins or whatever they're using. It's clear there. Uh, I've been looking at ways to divert the, that spring flow going under the back dam now, back into the pool. I have not come up with a natural way to do it. I talked to the water district last year about it, too. Uh, they pointed out to me, they sent over two engineers, you know, on the hydrology. They pointed out to me that Mother Nature does things that, based on physics, and this happened there. Uh, never anything for very cautious. I haven't considered them or talking about them because of the cost. It is being used on a large scale still by people, by swimmers. When I cut the grass there last week, a woman with two children came down to use it.
And then you're, you're cutting the grass?
Most of the time the county gives credit to. Uh, if it gets bad, uh, I think the first one there cuts it. But I have...
So there's no rocks that have been put in there to stop up the stream, or anything?
No.
But that one man just told me that there was rocks in there.
Well, he may be the one that put the rocks, but I don't know if he's the one who's telling. Water is on his side. I may know who you're calling.
Yeah, the county was there, and, and, and go try and wash somebody.
Yeah, but that, uh, hopefully, this will be another storm, nature will let it be. You know, help us clear it out. And it may even help seal the canal underneath the dam.
Well, you know, it was such a big place to me when it was first done. And remember, y'all had the, the little, uh, breed breeding up in house, everything was taller. And it was so great. And then when I went back this year, uh, with the children, uh, you know, I thought, well, that's just so. It's like, somewhere I want to bring the, the boys to swim. And when we went up there, I'm like, mm-mm. Then this man said, well, there's snakes in there. And that, that takes on my, what, yeah?
Are there vines on the rock?
There was, yeah.
Are they supposed to take the snakes down in the vine?
Oh...
And I've heard that thing before.
Yeah, yeah. Occasionally, there is snakes there. Uh, I've got some teenagers in the area that like snakes. They become alarmed, they go jump in the water and catch snakes. If I'm there mowing or picking up or whatever, they take them over and show them to me and ask if they can have them or if they should put them back. And I tell them, if they're what I call bad snakes, they go out and wash on the other side because there's plenty of them there. There's been alligators in there. I haven't had any problem with anybody less than alligators. Now, when they eat the fish that grow in the pool, when it gets too wet, small amounts of food they eat. But there, it's wildlife, it's a spring. That's part of swimming in the spring. We get birds there.
They're pretty.
Yeah, they're pretty. Uh, I have not seen a bad snake from, uh, in my bad snake, I mean, a lot.
This would mean you're all bad, but...
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate what you do there. And, um...
And if you, you talked about fighting the ramp on Fourth Street, I'll be glad to spread the word beginning of this quarter.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I mean, come on, something, something that I didn't yet, what, maybe got the whole Mexican fox thing?
Well, come straight to the fact.
I don't think that's what he may have said. Um, the piece at Fourth Street where the people own, there was a one guy at it, and then now owns all that property. And there's trailers in the earth, same cabins, it's something they're taking them out. Um, the problem is that because of the way the county is doing things in the past, I'm concerned that this gentleman will go ahead and do something to that property that may get done before you even know he's doing anything. Uh, because if he does, he could destroy the little inlet there where the people park their boats. Um, and also, the biggest problem that I can see, I'm not sure if he's trying to get an access. There are two roads, is that what I'm saying?
No.
Bad across the middle street.
Okay, if there's two roads in there, maybe just one of those closed. It could be a real problem if the county wants to use this property back here. And then when y'all own a piece out near the boat, around Longfalk Road, but he owns his big piece in the midst, and it's not water on the top. So it's out there, it's a trench. And that's what these roads are developing in there. And that really needs to have somebody looking at it, someone with him, to make sure that that's something that should be there. Because in Steam Hatchie, a lot of these people just thought, then they'll get them. Just so you know, and hopefully, they won't destroy it, destroy them up in there.
Is that something you can do, uh, told us or...
Did you hear any comments for, setting forth, anything to do?
Whoever's been there doing some work, we should be doing more, uh, laws, not outlaw. Said that was two poor sending up the way then, and it's like one might be... You don't want to be, you know, either they were... The road closed?
Like you talked about the road closed and...
Yeah.
It's not, it's not...
It was pretty closed, yeah.
Oh, but there's the water in the... Looking just upstairs in there.
So who tabled it? They advertised again. Yeah, you couldn't beat that company. Yeah, pretty good.
Anybody else? Thanks all for your, your information for the... On twenty-five, board informational items, wish you most...
I'm fine. That's what you want, please.
Mr. Payne?
Yes, I want to go back to RV, that's what I'm hoping. Because Mr. Dixie County Commissioner, he's been digging about him tonight, over the years, it also... He talks a little bit about RVs and what Dixie County does with RVs. Because they believe they are it, getting the, the uniform, you know, priority, you want it. And, and then, uh, what you reported, Mr. Payne, is that they're talking to neighbors on the...
What's that, Eric?
Well, they have to find that.
Yeah, all right, well, anyway, as part of our discussion, uh, to Mr. Nickenbuck, who's been on that board for a long time, said, "When you come in to Dixie County with an RV, you have to go by, you know, building plants. And you pay an impact fee." I don't know if impact fees are still, uh, I remember one time, the Department of Community Bears was still one of them, that was sort of popular way of, you know, seventy. One thing that's bothered me over the years is, I don't know, we have any traffic decisions of where all these RVs are, they sell through power folks. Do we have any other way to allow the RV? I don't know if I farm, do I still tell anybody?
I don't, I...
I just go put it out.
I believe the permit is for the power pole.
The power pole.
Right, and then that's what communicates to the tax collector so they know what to assess.
What about, and, uh, you know, any kind of fee in the tax? I'm not advocating for an impact fee. Which you might slow down some of the RVs if they're worth an impact fee that you pay. At the time, you get the permit, bring the RV, and if you don't have to get a permit, bring the RV, and you can get a permit for both. Just something, just turn it around a minute. And I've been having it, how much is that impact fee? And you could outline, about two or three thousand dollars. So, Mr. Payne, is there something you all think about?
And I tell you, there was something that, like, what you just passed, this last session about impact fee. Probably you'll get a copy of that, whatever it is.
Yeah, I think you changed.
Yeah.
Not that you can do it anymore. That's all I have.
Okay, I like it.
Yes, ma'am, uh, Miller Road and Miller Motors. There's some debris and... Yes, ma'am, uh, Miller Roads and Miller Motors, there's some debris and spiking on Woodbridge Roads, it's about going. Or somebody might get in a situation in Dixie County, but I was on the jack boat, and said, oh, man, there's just somebody who gets, yeah, a little bit of that. Go out that night, you can't see where the line is on Miller Roads, so.
I heard the work order on that.
You did?
Yes, sir. So we could go and take a look at it?
Well, uh, Doggo Road, on the right-hand side, that you turn off, has two big ditches over there, just like, uh, somebody might have cut them with a big truck. And if you had a flat tire, and had to get up on the side a little bit quick, you're gonna get it, you'll have the truck. And you get that gear up and level, so.
Which side is, where's the doggo?
On the right-hand side, you turn off on Doggo Road.
On which?
Turn off on Ninety Eighth. I'm using the fast phone, I think Mike can get it through. They're going to be right now collecting fines and, uh, what in the world? I appreciate it. That's it.
I'd like to thank the sheriff though, he's had a really hard. I enjoy the police presence down here, and so does the community, and we know that everyone. So relay the, the thanks to the sheriff, and he can, he has to, uh, he has to, you know, extract all the things. Now, I don't know how well we're on the scene, and the present police officer speech, we know it's a different, we, uh, thank you all.
Let me say, let me say this. Get our little, that's the thing over there, the, uh, state government, five firemen. Draw the boat out together. That was three deputy sheriffs, and two law enforcement officers, was that, that was it?
That was Leon County?
That was Leon County. And one of them happened to be Lonnie McCall's son, he worked for the five four, he was on that.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Did he come?
Yep.
Yeah, 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 it's a strong.
I was impressed.
Well, he hit the bill.
They were. I had one, I had one of these shows, but I don't think they made a one, that's not a one go.
Do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
And, do you have anything, anybody else? Not at my time. Uh, I want to talk to y'all about this Walker Bridge, remember?
Uh, sure.
I brought, I brought this up, and I've been, back and forth with anybody, I mean, with, um, you know, one quite a bit. Um, trying to get a handle on from, you know, who all, who, that, you know, who takes responsibility for it, and so forth and so on. So, um, you want to just come up and speak, uh, about all of the stuff you told me about, and what's going on about? I'd ask for, I hope you know the questions, and you've been very good to get with Jefferson County and S D O P to answer my questions, but since you did me all this, I'll let you know.
Um, so I did communicate with Jefferson County, um, county coordinator, who felt very strongly that Taylor County should share responsibility financially for repair of the bridge. And, um, stated that he would be reaching out to D O P to, he had questions about ownership and responsibility, and since the bridge was in two different counties, I think there was a question how ownership could be assigned to, only to Jefferson County, and not Taylor County as well. So I reached out to our contact at D O P, and she did confirm that the ownership for that bridge is Jefferson County. And I asked him questions about, um, you know, have you been in this situation before? And she said, yes, and they encouraged counties to work together, but ultimately, the bridge belongs to Jefferson County. So I explained to her that, you know, we had some concerns as far as evacuation for our citizens in that area, and that could the replacement of the bridge, which is scheduled for, um-
Two years?
I believe two years from now. Um, if that could be moved up at all, and she said, well, that would be a question Jefferson County would have to ask that in a different district, in Tallahassee. So at that point, I realized it's, we, we really can't make any request to D O P because the bridge belongs to Jefferson County. And I feel a little helpless, um, because it doesn't look like there's much recourse on our part as far as D O P even entertaining any request from us.
Well, see, that, you know, to me, it's ridiculous that we can't even talk with S D O P about it, that it has to be that county, and I'm not sure how much, how interested they are in this situation, but we've got a lot of our residents that are impacted greatly, and then with the evacuation, you know, we identified some other routes that we could take, but if the storm is coming from the west, which it does many times, we're gonna send people back west when they're, are trying to evacuate, but I just don't understand, since we're impacted greatly, why we, have you talked to Barney, what Barney's like, huh?
Ben.
The Barney, yeah.
Can we not talk to Barney and make him try to intervene?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be, and I'll be happy to reach out to him.
Yeah, because I don't, I, see, I don't want to sit here and do nothing, because it's ours, and it's theirs, and they have to start with negotiations and all of that, but I've got people that's gonna be having to need to dance about it. Um, I just wanted the board to know what, I want to tell them now about this situation, and we're kind of in a, in a, you know, helpless, helpless situation, except I, I don't want to give up. If, if you can contact Barney, or, uh-
I think I can do it.
Send me, or somebody, I'll call you soon, yes, sir.
Why didn't we do an interlocal agreement with Jefferson County, and then we have some, uh, jurisdiction over the, uh, of the bridge, and it's definitely to, uh, fund up.
Well, the whole thing is the funding, because, you know, they're willing us to pay half of it, and they, from the, from the, uh, 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 communication that I see, that, you know, one of the authorities committee, they say they can't even afford half of it. And, uh, it happens a little bit. And so-
Give us the bridge down, uh, for ten years.
Two hundred thousand dollars was the mission, so maybe that's what's all for the firm.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, I mean, do we have a hundred thou, do we have a hundred thousand? So, if, if we, if we did go in, in an interlocal agreement, and they're not able to do half of it, and if that, even if they did, what would we, you know, what would a hundred thousand dollars do to us? Well, I mean, we have to go-
And you got to pay them a check or something.
You know, and then, and then, if, if, if that's the, if it is true that they're gonna do it in two years, and when you talk to Barney, I want you to verify, is it two years? And if it is, and he can intervene in any way, I've tried that evacuation stuff, and emergency, uh, you know, emergency transport.
And, and I believe that, um, the young lady that was emailing me, I, I don't know that she meant, you're not allowed to talk to the district, it just said if there was a request to change the date, it would have to come from the owner of the bridge, he would be Jefferson County.
Well, if, if somebody can help us with that, then, then, you know, we really need to be, well, not just to get to me, you know, get them to help us out on this. Um, but, you know, it, it, and I've got some older constituents down there, and one of them is having a heart attack or a stroke, and you've got to bring an ambulance, you've got to bring an ambulance down miles of dirt road, and there's a lot of curbs on those dirt roads, it means you can't be going to that, there's a lot of traffic, and a lot of curbs. Um, I need to talk to Barney too, so we need to connect him there, huh?
Can I add something you want to add?
Yeah.
A, a lady on break, saying that Frank DeRavi was Jefferson County engineer, Frank got that money as an evacuation route. To widen and do, to get the cell, you know, from the bridge to the mall. And where's anybody that, that can get something stirred up, that Frank DeRavi. So Lonnie Mallory got Frank, who, I don't know if he left on his terms in Jefferson County, I don't know if he was doing this, but we got him.
Send me this number two, I'll call him soon.
I'll, 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 I'll.
I don't mind calling, maybe I'll loan him some, oh.
Yeah, yeah. You remember, after you tore that road over there, right, you were wrecking?
I know.
He got over there and got your road fixed.
He, he's found to be a bad, every time, I've seen him, every time, sorry, I have-
I have to, yeah, a bridge fixer. You know, the lady lady, well, was from the hot, you got to keep an eye on your baby, and then also, and the lady, make it your lady. And she told me when the water was over the road, and you had to go down, that postal authority don't allow her to find a, a few of them routes, and just, or what you doing? Are they delivered to lady? Do our folks have it?
I have not had anybody-
I, she hasn't called me, no.
I have to-
I imagine that she can go up like you do, Rockford Road, that way again, and, and that's, and I don't know what's happening.
But, you know, you could, you could not get an ambulance or a fire truck to there. And if a fire truck's are over at Eaton Center, the only way to get there is through where you're talking about.
Well, we got that part of that road, really, I can get a good job, just in that, that part of the road, so I heard from, we got that fix.
I'm just trying to make a good case.
Oh, yeah, you, I can do that. Well, God, we got, we got mail service, we got ambulance service, we got a back running route, what, what else do we need, much new bus over there? Uh, I bet, but that's, they're gonna tie that across the bridge, oh, God.
Well, uh, I just do, do what we care, um, you know, because it, it is, uh, a, a, a bad situation, which, I go to the next thing. I think until we can get something resolved, even if we have something resolved too, it still would take time to do it, and we still got these people down there that would really be in a bad situation. Um, but, um, we're gonna have to keep a close eye on the Rockford Road, the Mason Road, Adolf Camp Road, Wilbur Knolls Road, and the Church Road, what is the Church Road?
Not me, sure.
About Eliass Road, this is big, I bet it works, I, I just, that's how I'll do it, but I'm just saying with this rain, we have to, I think they're gonna have to pay a little closer attention, but that's the main, um, that's the main road now. And that's something we need, uh, somebody to, the lady to her, but close to, um, I, the other thing, a road down there, and, and the dogfels are higher than my head, are all along in there, and so now we're seeing increased traffic. Could we notice the signs of all those roads down there, just road traffic from one end to the other on those roads? Because on those curves, it, it was, I had a lady to call me, and I almost kind of had a collision last week. And so I rode down to look for myself, and she was like, it, it's, so this, this is what caused a little extra work on us, too. Okay, and then about Walker Bridge, um, yeah, um, all of these Hodges Park that we talked about, to get the S D P, do you need more directions to do that? Or do you need to, to, uh, I'll give you just one hand of yours?
Well, I guess, um, we're looking at what is called the, uh, sequencing summary table for our pop three funds. And this is a good time for me to just remind the board of what funds we have available now. Um, we have five hundred thousand dollars, um, that became available last year, and that was for feasibility and, um, studies and property appraisals. And then this year, um, four point eight million is available for property acquisitions, that is the way it's weighed out in our S D P. And then we do not get any more funding for five years.
We got the pop three money, and that first chunk of money was sent up, we can go do it with what?
Five hundred thousand dollars total.
Well, that's a half a million.
And then-
So we got five point three million, and we won't get any more pop three money for five years?
Five years. And just the earmark, this is earmark, now, I, I spoke to this consultant today who helped put the S D P together, and he said that the direction or the concept at the time was that the county could acquire a, a property, and then we could just sit on it for five years, until we had funding available for construction. And I, and I understand that that may have been the original plan, but now that we are looking at possibly, um, going into an agreement with F D P for Hayden Poe, I know Commissioner Feigall has brought up, um, maybe reconstructing the bathrooms at Hodges Park. My question would be, is do we want to ask for an S D P amendment now? Um, and the recommendation is that we move two million into construction, and we leave two point eight for property acquisition.
I'm not talking about spending two million dollars now on Hodges Park bathrooms, uh-
No, 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 that is-
We can buy property and sit on it.
You can.
I think we need to buy, uh, we need to buy that property.
We can spray more, we can spray more of your property.
Now, now, will you go and get that, or will you have to?
Get that done.
Get people putting in there.
Well, okay, now, remember that we are already, we are already composing a writing grant application for feasibility studies for Hayden Poe, and for Dr. Hudson's property, because that was the direction of the board, and those, we're kind of in the middle of this grant application.
Would you get by a particular piece of property, like, the spring warning property, without a city building set?
I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, it's, it's going to be a boat round, I mean, I mean, he's, they're, we, we could get a city building study on that too, I mean, that, that, that three, three, scarlet, I mean, that, that war, we-
I don't know that it's that much trouble, but, but I, it's not that much trouble, I just don't know that we want to amend our S D P multiple times. If we can come to a landing point together of, this is the way we want to allocate the funds, and have a certain amount set aside for construction, if, if the feasibility studies come back favorable for, um, for constructing a boat ram at Hayden Poe, and that would include any direction we could get from D E P for permitting, et cetera. So a lot of attention's on the feasibility study, which, I think that the feasibility studies and the, the appraisal come first, because we really don't, we really can't spend the money until we have the, the appraisal, and I, I don't know that the feasibility studies are required, but you have to-
I mean, you're a bloody, uh-
You have to have the appraisal.
Back to Hodges Park, I mean, we're not acquiring any property here.
No, no.
And so we wouldn't need a city building study there, or would we?
Well, I, I don't, I wouldn't think so, not for a construction, not for, but, but I can double check on that. Because all of this is kind of built around your original goal, which is starting to change a little bit. So I'm not sure, I will have to check and see what's required and what's not required. But at the end of the day, I do think that we need to have a plan as far as how we want to spend the money that's available now.
Okay, let's do this, okay. Next workshop, yeah, uh, that the next workshop, we just come prepared to discuss this in depth, and all, but, you know, um, there's a lot of people out there that would argue, and we don't need to put in anyone, but with, um, particularly the people that I've talked to, that say that there's not as many to talk to, if there's a lot- and I know part of that may be due to opening up early, and then oversaculation, I know that, um, if you look at these boat ramps and, uh, you got a lot of people that are not Jefferson County people, and a lot of Jefferson County people are saying, you know, the more boat ramps you put in, the more people from out of town is gonna come, and there's not gonna be any stop list. I'm just, I'm just quoting what, what has been told to me. And then, of course, you know, you've got the business people that more and more will come from far as they can come, because obviously, they're in business. So, it's just one of the, I think that this board needs to wait, wait on, and make sure that, uh, what we're doing, that, uh, we're, we're doing the right thing. And maybe that is to put in more boat ramps, and just like at Spring Water, that's not gonna attract a lot of people from out of town, that's gonna be on the local.
Hey, now, that's a bunch of Georgia, Georgia businessmen, what, he's, it's most.
But to put in this brand new boat ramp somewhere, I'm just wondering, and for me, it comes from this, or I'm not interested in a lot of properties that pretty much you know you will never get a, you'll never get a boat ramp there, and just to say that it's gonna be another part, we can't even see what was part of that.
Yeah, I, I, if, if you can't build a deep water channel there, there's no sense in buying it.
There's no, you know, it's-
And, and a deep water channel will cost more money than we're gonna get from the, from the whole project, fifteen years. I mean, well, I mean, that's a much money there.
Since we wouldn't be buying the property, now, Hodges Park, to be smart, we ought to do the feasibility study. Answer my question, if we can get a sale. And if we could get a sale, and if we didn't have to buy the property. Uh, as far as big, monster sized boat ramps, that'd be for me, that'd be enough. You know, then you got one thing that you have one there, you got one here, then you got a smaller one, Spring Water, you already got a space park ramp in D C, you put it off of.
Dig your mound up, oh, yeah.
Dig your mound up, boat ramp, they're open up.
And their small boat ramp, well, they need more park in there, and they could add on with that parking lot there. And, and, I mean, after that, we need parking lot.
Right. That's gonna be the, the-
Well, we, we need to workshop this, and, uh, we've got plenty of time for this discussion, but I can say, just to say, you know, we've got a lot to consider, a lot to talk about.
Well, and, and I don't want to kick your hand down the road, by any means, but a lot of, some of these projects kind of hinge upon what the feasibility studies really shows us. Um, the feasibility studies were to the properties that were ranked number one and number two, and I even, I even reached out to Lincoln, who is helping us with our, our pop three, their, our grant consultant, and they verified that we really should have these feasibility studies done to give us a little bit more guidance as far as the future of some of the plans that were come up with originally. And maybe that will give us some guidance. But nevertheless, I would say we need to consider an S D P amendment.
But let's do it one more time, and that, you know, we'd like to say, we don't wanna be doing it every six months.
Right.
There's a, there's a big property, Big Creek, uh, eight or nine acres, outside ground, there's a boat ramp right there, the kitchen come on the wall, right by Big Creek.
And we're gonna, if we go do the feasibility study on the state property. Uh, I would, Big Creek's right there, yeah, you know.
But there's a channel there, you know, right, a good thing about Big Creek.
You need to tell old Rosemary Wood, like, uh, is Rosemary, she didn't talk to me. She didn't talk, well, that's the name, you would have known.
Well, let's just talk about it, the other, the other thing that, um, I think that we, we do workshop too, is I heard a last meeting about, uh, code enforcement, maybe, you know, getting, instead of complaint driven, maybe utilizing more for non-compplaint, something so, you know, and, and I don't wanna do it tonight or run straight to go home, but let's put some of the next workshop, and, you know, get them to tell us how many hours they're working, and how many, how many calls do we get that are, how many, what do they do that's complaint driven? I just can't believe there's that many calls coming in every week, but let's, and I said, I, I can put this by,
you know, the, the hours, our, our venue hours, and what being anticipated, but we'll have some numbers ready.
Right, but, uh, and then the board, we can all discuss it, and if something that the board is interested in, fine, what's not interested in, it's fine too, I just wanna put it out there for discussion. I know it was kind of missing in passing before, and it's probably actually put it as an agenda, you know, the, uh, attempt to get kicked out, to kick down.
Right, that's, that's, I'm gonna roll, I mean, how would you say what's turning down, how would we?
He, there's, that department, he's like, he did for twenty hours a week.
Twenty.
Twenty, but, um, I, I know as of right now, he's working less than that, um, because he, the, the response is driven by complaints. So in other words, that, that position, as far as I know, hasn't typically controlled and looked for violations, we've mainly, you know, answered complaints and investigated citizen complaints.
Okay, so that's-
Okay, that's, um, that's all I have, I wanna thank the staff for the work that you're doing. Uh, I know I've asked you to do a lot with this Walker Bridge and gather a lot of information, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing, appreciate the newspaper, uh, so far I've done, the newspapers have reported, um, the way it happened, I appreciate that. And, uh, wanna thank you, uh, for the Sheriff, the Sheriff's Department for being here for, um, anybody else have anything, is there a question for a turn? Is there a second? All of them, they're up.
Get thirty in the morning, move. Get down and move.